zoning appeals and he was unable to attend this evening. Mr. Gary said this is on for Doc Seisum?
Yes, you adopted the resolution as part of your consent agenda and it is included there will also be included with the minutes for the meeting.
For the record, this is Mr. Bird's resolution?
Yeah, Mr. Bird is one of my constituents and he's served for a long time on the BESIA and I want to express my personal appreciation for all these folks.
And the next resolution-
Actually, that's Mr. Conick.
That is?
I sequestered Mr. Bird's-
Oh, you really did. All right, the next resolution is for Mr. Conick and I'm going to read it from here and then I'll come shake your hand. Well, I can do elbows. Resolution of appreciation and commendation from the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors to David L. Conick for his service on the Board of Zoning Appeals for Rappahannock County, whereas David L. Conick served the citizens of Rappahannock County for over five years on the Rappahannock County Board of Zoning Appeals, ending July 9, 2020, and whereas Mr. Conick was dedicated to his responsibilities and provided with intelligence, understanding, and integrity in partial land use stewardship, and whereas the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors, on behalf of all the citizens of Rappahannock County, wishes to express its profound appreciation for his service to the citizens of Rappahannock County and his devotion to the betterment of the county. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors does hereby express its highest appreciation to David L. Conick for his significant contribution to the county and to commend him for outstanding service to the citizens of Rappahannock County. And be it further resolved that this resolution be spread across the minutes of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors for all citizens to reflect upon the service and accomplishments of this dedicated public servant. Adopted this fourth day of January 2021. Mr. Conick?
Thank you, David. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I think to be fair, we did allow Jennifer to speak after she received her award. Do you have something to say, sir? Please come on.
Well, I just want to express my appreciation to, first of all, my colleagues on the Board of Zoning Appeals, past and present, and to especially for the nomination for the planning commission, which is something that most of you know I just wanted to do. I want to express my appreciation to all of you for your support in appointing me to the planning commission to serve this past year. Unfortunately, we lost a lot of time due to circumstances beyond everybody's control, so we didn't get everything on the work plan and we hope to get done, finished. There's a lot of work left to be done. And also, I want to express my appreciation to those who aren't here, who came before me. They go back a long ways to some few people, I think they're just names, but there's a lot of memories around that very table that are very dear to me and so I want to express my appreciation to Pete Estes and to Dave Bannon, to Alan Stokes, David Thornhill, and to Werner Preitzer. And last but farthest, Noble Miller, because an awful lot of what I know and what I was able to use to give back to the county comes from those people. And they're not here, but I hope they would be equally appreciative of all I try to do. And so again, I want to just say thank you very much also to Mr. Curry and to the staff. I believe, thank them for playing for this community without their help, which is a very difficult job. So I guess the torch gets passed to some new people. Relatively few people are entrusted with dealing with the future of our county and protecting it. And as you look around the group, most I want to just say if you're privileged to serve the county and give something back, thank you all very much and thank you for the certificate and the time for this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that moves us into appointments. And the first is the Library Board of Trustees. Mr. Curry, do you want to help us on this one?
Yes, as you're aware, the Library Board of Trustees is fixed pursuant to Rappahannock County Code, Section 123-3. It includes nine members, of which one may be a county representative and I fill that role for the county. There are currently, as of December 31, three vacancies on the board. Of those three, one member has decided not to put their name forward for reappointment and two have requested reappointment. You may recall that your somewhat new policy on appointments has different forms for appointment and reappointment and you'll see those in the attachments. Ms. Sidrow and Ms. Schumate have filed Form 810A, while Ms. Peterson, Mr. Temperlake, Mr. Kalin, Ms. Welch, and Ms. Dr. Burnley have filed Form 810B. So before you tonight is a rather large slate from which to make three appointments.
I'm not sure, Madam Chair, how you want to do it, but I'd like to place Ms. Sidrow's name back in nomination for reappointment. She's the only member from Jackson District and the only one that applied from Jackson District.
Do these require seconds?
So- These are, I'll just say typically you make an appointment through a motion, a motion second vote. You could somehow develop a pool of candidates that worked out where you could make friendly amendments to each other's motions or you can make separate motions and separate votes.
So, Mr. Frazier, would you be willing to, along with Ms. Sidrow, Peterson, and Welch, have that as a slate and we do it all at one time and effort to save time?
I was just trying to keep some sort of balance. Looks like we have a hole in Piedmont as well. We don't have a citizen rep from there, that district. Other than that, I don't have any favoritism-
Ms. Harris, I believe-
Yes, Ms. Harris is from Piedmont.
But I mean, it would be nice to have a second to be sure. I was wondering, none of the applicants are present. I assume it doesn't look like any of the applicants are present. Our Madam Chairman, I was also wondering if any of the applicants are online and would like to say anything or are willing to answer questions?
None of the applicants are online.
If you want to put that in the form of motion, maybe we could do it one by one.
That may be the best way to do it.
Well, yeah, I did add as form of a motion.
I'll second the reappointment of Ms. Sidrow.
And to be clear, this is a four-year term pursuant to your code.
Okay. Any discussion?
I know that we are probably very fortunate, I know that we are very fortunate to have this pool of clearly qualified candidates for these positions. It's three positions, which is a large portion of this board. From the Library Board meeting that I attended this year, there's a lot going on in the Library Board. And while the statements we received from the candidates are very nice, I would like to know how they stand on certain things that are going on at the library currently before I make any appointments to the Library Board. In particular, I noted that the library had closed for the entire month of January and I know some of the folks that live in my district really depend on the library for three sources, especially in the very cold weather, for their internet connection. And I'd like to know where our appointees stand on that. We also heard today a pitch regarding a large project that would require a boundary line adjustment that would involve the library and I'd like to know where the appointees stand on that. I think this is a very active board and I have questions about all the appointees. And I would, I'm not comfortable making these appointments today and if the majority of the board feels that they are comfortable and have a good grasp on these issues, we probably should move forward, but instead of the people that we're appointing.
Ms. Smith, would it be your proposal that at our next regular meeting that we can make an informed decision?
I think that, I think there's a lot of decisions facing the library.
Good idea.
Access in the pandemic is-
I agree with Ms. Smith. She's made very good points and we're talking about significant potential capa, the project we do. I have to agree with-
As your representative on the body, I'm unaware of any cred actions that must be-
And entabling it that weekend?
What I preface- Such-
Forward those questions or you could just-
The guidelines would be what I've enumerated. What's your position? We might be able to offer to support the community through the pandemic and also what would be your position on changes to the structure at this time or taking on additional capital improvements or new capital projects in regards to the library?
I can tell you that the Library Board is actively working on, and so the first step of the entire, with the budget that they have, do it on the existing site, do it on a different site. There are just many, many variables at this point in time.
Understood.
I think we could, I wonder, Ms. Donahue, if we could, I think Ms. Smith's questions are excellent. I wonder if between now and, you know, or reasonable time in advance to the next meeting, maybe we could each come up with some additional questions and at least if nothing else, have them ready so we could ask standardized questions when each of the applicants is here.
Right, well, and I think, I wanted to make the intention clear, the intention of asking questions isn't to blindside or have a gotcha moment with the candidates.
Right.
It's just to get to know the candidates better-
Totally agree.
And to know what kind of, you know, actions we can expect from them, you know, and their participation on the board.
Totally agree.
So, and they, you know, will probably learn some things about us in the process, too.
Ms. Donahue, maybe you could think about it and let us know how you want to organize it and if we're going to like provide written questions to the applicants in advance or if we just take a few minutes, I don't know how you want to proceed.
I would think-
The perception is not great.
Okay.
But we could each individually submit-
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think that's probably our best route.
We just each submit some questions.
Each submit some questions, Mr. Curry.
Okay.
Does the library have a meeting coming up or?
Always. Hold on. The next meeting is- Can never keep track. It may not be till, I think it's the 28th of January.
Okay. All right, so if each board member will submit any questions they have for the applicant to Mr. Curry, should probably try to get that done by the week from today. That work?
And so I believe on the floor is now a motion to table.
I seconded that.
And you seconded it and I believe with that motion is to-
Close discussion?
Have members send me questions and have me send those on to the candidates.
We don't need a vote on that?
Yes.
We do? All those in favor of sending the, or tabling this and sending Mr. Curry the questions, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. On to appointment, Rappahannock County Community Policy and Management Team.
Yes, thank you. We discussed CPT earlier in the meeting when the board appointed your representative and the Code of Virginia has a very specific slate of people who serve on CPT and that is the agency head of multiple agencies that are involved in the child welfare or they're designee. And so in this case, the Juvenile Court Service Unit was Elaine Lassiter. She's left the position of the probation director. Currently in that position is Ira Holland as an interim director and they've requested, Mr. Holland has requested that we appoint him to the CPT, being the director and appoint himself. You're aware as well that Ms. Parker is moving on to another locality and my conversation with her and the interim director Kathy White is that Kathy White would be appropriate appointee for social services. Beyond those organizations, there are private provider representatives and a parent representative. Mr. Rafer was the parent representative and he's moved out of the area and so we have received one application for a parent representative. This is typically a difficult position to fill and so I'm grateful that we did find a candidate for that slot. So if the board is of a mind to do so, you could appoint this slate of three people or at least the two that represent the court services and social services and then he will be a parent representative differently if that's how you choose to do it.
I'll make a motion. We go ahead and appoint the slate that's presented.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Curry, is Kathy White, she resides in Rappahannock County?
No.
Sorry?
No, that's not my understanding.
I'm confusing her with somebody by that name who does. Okay.
Any other discussion? Okay, we'll close discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Appointment to the Agricultural and Forestal Districts.
Yes, the Advisory Committee for the Agricultural and Forestal District has one vacancy. That board needs to be filled with either landowners or landowners who are involved in agricultural, forestal production, have to fill that category. You already have enough people to fill that category. So this person need only be a landowner but could also have an agricultural and forestal production background. You do have one applicant, which if board members remember, we had vacancy on this for a very long time last time, so I'm very grateful that there is somebody willing to sit.
It appears putting that raise in pay helped find somebody.
It's called arm twisting your neighbor. Ms. Donahue, if I may-
Absolutely.
I recruited this candidate for this highly paid position. This is Mr. Bruce Sloth and just by way of background, if you reviewed his application materials, he had an interest in land survey business. He is a landowner, maybe 25 or 30 acres, old ski lodge area. He's extremely detail oriented, works in software programming on the defense front, has GIS background and I can trust him wholeheartedly and if you would allow me, I'll make a motion that we appoint him to the committee.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it. I will note that there is no term for these and we'll keep you as long as you're willing.
I'll make sure he never leaves.
All right, any other discussion?
I was just going to say, it appears both applying for a job like this and that he keeps sources, he may be of questionable-
He's pretty solid and he has a high level of security clerk, so any question about his mental capacity, I think has been resolved through that process.
All right. Close discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
I'll be sure to stop at his house and congratulate him.
All right.
You might be pushing it.
Now we're going into old business developments regarding augmenting volunteer responders. All right. What do we have, paid ALO? Ms. Smith, you might want to talk through what the Public Safety Committee did. I think you met-
My preference, Madam Chairman, would be for Mr. Curry to kick us off and then I can report on the actions of the Public Safety Committee.
Okay.
Full-time, part-time ALS providers who would then be able to run calls- In the day- To upgrade or possibly at a C for the next call. Those to be idea of a chase buggy for a few different- But there are pros and cons. Those have embedded by the body, had something I may have missed. Ms. Smith was at the meeting and Mr. Frazier was at the Public Safety Committee meeting and I believe you were at the-
Association.
Association meeting. So amongst all of us, there are plenty of people that were here.
And Mr. Williams, if I understand correctly, you now chair the association or you're the lead president? I guess we may have some questions for you.
Madam Chairman, if I just may, I did want to echo what Mr. Curry said about the Public Safety Committee meeting and our approach to this topic. We were narrow in our discussion of this topic because we thought that was appropriate or I thought that was appropriate. Mr. Frazier, if you would, I'd please companies to continue to meet the parameters of the fire services agreement. We all were also very clear at the Public Safety Committee as to how to pursue the solution. Mr. Frazier has anything additional?
You summed it up perfectly, but I think that I have to echo Mr. Curry's concerns that we have to put this in place because this is what's been recommended and this is probably the least costly measure that we can take immediately, but I think we're going to have to stay on top of it.
Ms. Donahue, if I may-
Yes.
I just wanted to ask Mr. Williams a question and if it would be okay, I'd like Mr. Gluny to reiterate his earlier comments in this context so that I can connect them to this discussion. Mr. Williams, I attended a chief's meeting that you attended and my recollection was that you, and tell me if I'm mischaracterizing your comments, but my recollection of your comments at that time was we have to do something and it should be a small step forward. And if that's a correct characterization of what you said, does this fit the bill?
Basically, what we have discussed and I've said over time is the time's coming where the volunteers need some help. We're trying to find something that will help maintain the volunteers and maybe help build the volunteers. If they know that, hey, if I go down to the station, we're going to get on the call because we'll have this person helping us. But that's what we're looking at there and one of the biggest things we looked at also is how, how do we go into this? That's what we're looking at there and one of the biggest things we looked at also is how, how do we go into this to where we don't have a big shock to the taxpayers?
Right.
With the volunteers, basically, as Mr. Curry stated, this person would be there and if the EMS call comes out, they'll respond out to assist that company to get their ambulance out. If that company gets out and this person's not needed, that person can assist that company to get their ambulance out. If that company gets out and this person's not needed, that person can come on back and that volunteer department can handle with their volunteers, still keeping the volunteers involved. If not, they'll get on with them and help transport and treat the patient and everything.
How many individuals will need to be recruited to provide the contemplated coverage? I mean, how many, how many individuals will have to be in the pool of advanced life support providers?
Roughly, I think what we came up with maybe six to eight, but it also depends whether they're part-time or full-time. And that's not a decision I feel the association or the chiefs should make, that's y'all's decision whether we're going to be told you're going to get full-time people or fund them for part-time. If we do part-time, there's going to have to be a bigger pool of people to pull from because they're going to be working other jobs. If you have full-time, you're going to have certain dedicated people to work the schedule.
Is it your expectation that the market is such that we won't have difficulty recruiting for that many positions, whether full or part-time?
Well, one good thing is if we done a mix of part-time and full-time, we could get, we could also do something that Mr. Frazier's always talked about when I was part of the county, is the grant process. Falkir County and other counties around us, as they've done part-time, some part-time people, they've used those when it come time for the grant process to say, hey, we like to make these, to get grants to where it allows you to build your budget as far as first year was 100%. Then it breaks it down to within three or four years, the county picks up the whole thing. That's one plus with some volunteers, but one, I mean with part-time, but one thing I have to say, if you have all part-time, like I say, they're working other jobs. I myself right now know the COVID restrictions for volunteering and everything. You have part-time people that could get on that, as long as COVID goes on. You could have some that, where we get lucky, we have a pool where we don't have to worry about that. We don't know that. But if you went full-time, if you had six to eight full-time people, then they would be dedicated to your county. But what's it going to cost us is the question.
And then it sounds like we're going to try this to see if it will work. Could you identify off the top of your head, performance measures that we would have to apply to evaluate with objectivity whether or not it's working? I mean, what types of, what types of way should we use to measure success and whether this is actually-
Just off the top of my head, but not, and I'd want to meet with the executive committee of the association and the chiefs and all to come up with those performance measures, but just and the department presidents and everything, but just some things we can look at as far as if that chase buggy goes out, how long are they on the scene waiting for another ambulance to get there? Are the first dudes getting their ambulance out to assist this person in the chase buggy? Or are we still having to wait to extend a period of time for an ambulance to come from across the county somewhere to meet this person? Those could be some performance measures we could do and I also can tell you, the fire service agreement has one performance measure in there we need to tighten down on that we could use and that's the percentage of your calls and things like that that you respond to. Those are a couple of things we could put in place-
Okay.
-to help measure this. How often does that person happen to be used versus how often are our volunteers kicking in to help with it as well? And we could put several different things in play, but without talking to the executive committee, the chiefs or whatever, I really don't want to go down too far saying this is what we would do-
Right.
And all that, so.
Thanks a lot.
But there is, we can put performance measures in to know exactly, is it working, is it not working and all, but I want to stress, especially for the citizens, that we looked at this as we're trying to be good stewards of the money-
Yep.
-and everything and take care of public safety in the county. And by doing that, like I've always been told, this is a baby step. Hopefully it'll work for a couple of years like it did in the other counties. We may put it into play and come back and say, hey, it's working for a little bit, but we got to do something additional. I hope not, I hope it helps and I hope it really helps with our volunteers and everything. But this is what's good, what we think right now is the best to help maintain our volunteers where they're still running and they still have a part in it. Because I have seen systems where they've been, have paid come into the county and the paid versus volunteers working together with a big force sometimes has hurt the volunteers more. And that's what we don't want to do here, so.
Well, thank you. Your previous comments and your comments today are very thoughtful and much appreciated.
Thank you.
Ms. Donahue, would it be okay if we heard from Mr. Gluny as a member of the Fire Lobby Board briefly?
I don't know if we want to let the board finish with Mr. Williams first and then have Mr. Gluny come up, which I think is better.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
That's good. Anybody else on the board? I've got a couple of questions.
I did think of one follow-up point to make. It's more of a comment than a question.
I did think of one follow-up point to make, it's more of a comment than a question, and it hadn't occurred to me what I made in my previous remarks, but one thing that did come up at the Public Safety Committee is going to be the importance of keeping dispatch in on this to make it a successful solution.
Yeah.
And to get, and to maximize our investment in terms of the return we're getting with the response, and applying that also to the Chester Gap solution as well.
I can tell you, standing here now as president of the association, the chiefs will be meeting, they will be meeting more regularly to look in at our dispatch policies we have currently, and we will be looking at what do we need to put in play to better serve the citizens as far as, even though certain companies do, do we put another company automatically on with them and things like that? That will be one of the assignments coming first of the year for the chiefs to sit down and review.
But that's.
And that is something that will have to be tied in with this as well, as far as, we've been looking at different policies, when we met at Company Two back in 2020, end of the year, we talked about some different policies there to implement to know, getting a quicker staff unit on the road and everything, so we will, they will have that assignment to work on.
And then I know there had been discussion, I don't remember if there had ever been a resolution, but there is a way to pull metrics from our dispatch system that was going to be an add-on, Gary, and there was some question about whether that would work for us or not?
I'll just, I'll say it's yet to be determined, it's very difficult to pull data with the metrics that we want out of any system, let alone this system.
I can say we're still at the old school where we'd have to sit down, go through the book, flip the pages, and see who got out and all that, hopefully within the, and we're beyond those times, but it'll take us a year to get there, to get the numbers in place.
Thank you.
I'll just, I'll add to the conversation that.
Then, as far as what they do.
Okay.
Done a chase vehicle for a long time, they hired some part-time, they hired some full-time, and now they're taking opportunity of the grants out there, like Mr. Frazier always talked about, to build their full-time force.
Okay.
But again, our biggest thing here is how to move forward to be good stewards of taxpayers' money and help save our volunteers right now.
Mr. Frazier, is the concept that you have part-time as a catalyst for attracting grant money? You have to have something.
I'm not sure, I just know that they exist, and I know that Albemarle is the last county that I'm aware of to use it, but, I mean, there's 95 counties, so I don't have any idea how to date my.
I guess I'm just worried about the concept of having, starting with part-time, and that.
But they have, well, if I could interrupt just for a second, because that's the way my mind works. The one particular grant that Mr. Williams mentioned, the ones, they're all safer grants, I believe, they come under that heading of safer grants, but you have the one where once you have a, I guess, a plan of forward motion to work on, and let's say you need $3 million to finance it, you would get X number of dollars, which would be your 100% in the next year, 75, 50, and 25. But they also have other grants, I know they have grants for volunteer retention and recruitment, so they probably have something in the middle there, though I just don't know, I haven't spent a lot of time recently on it, but there's, you know, there's deadlines for these things, as there are with all grants.
But I just want to understand that having a part-time component puts us in a position to attract that.
I don't know.
Especially for, I'm talking more to the safer grant that Mr. Frazier mentioned, because I know Falkir's used it, Warren County's used it, Culpeper's looked at it, Madison is looking at it, from some of our standpoints.
So we'll have a full-time person to look into this sort of opportunity?
That would be, I'm sure, a great help, because.
Because the safer grant is a big, is where you can get a lot of money for it, but you got to have certain things in place already to get it. We never had part-time people.
Okay.
We would have had to go for it from nothing to full-time. When you're showing, trying to fill part-time positions, it's a little bit more, that's how Falkir County's built their pool, what people they have, so.
Okay.
Mr. Perry?
Kevin, with your experience, if we got a full-time EMS coordinator or whatever it's going to, title's going to be.
Emergency services coordinator.
Emergency services.
Three hats.
Individual, if, how would it work if we made him basically a czar, where he had, where the, there was a chain of command, and whatever he told the individual chiefs, you know, was, had to go? I mean, would that work if he had that kind of authority?